Did we go into two closed sessions? I noticed it down here, but I couldn't remember it. Of course, I'm getting old. Make the motion that we accept the minutes of previous meeting.
I'll second it.
Any questions? All the time we're representing, thank you. The little folks, okay. Tara, your next on agenda here.
I think I reviewed you last time regarding the road closure. We had two different people. Mary's request, which is over here about Jerry's house, I found that on the alleyway discussing. Was on a plaque for East Hartford City Edition. It was unnamed, undeveloped, or at least it's undeveloped now, maybe at one time it had been developed. But I have prepared written notices, a consent form, and they go through all that and decide they want to do that to close that portion of that alleyway. So that's all prepared right here. The other one I haven't found on the city plaque is the designation and acceptance by the city regarding that other INI. In my opinion, it was more likely it was reserved easement for a landowner. So I don't really see if the city can go to that expense. If it's not actually a public right of way. The other thing is, you had asked me about my original memo concerning the wastewater treatment plant. And I think everybody here, except for maybe Sid and Jody, actually has seen that, or at least knows what the discussion is. Jody, I got one copy here. You made another one. Email it however you all want to. What's in that memo though, and what was originally presented, is based on other audits, because that's all we had at the time. This past month, we get copies of more recent numbers. But my understanding, they still haven't come out with the most recent audit.
Well, I wanted to talk about this wastewater thing really quickly because I got a little better understanding of the wastewater situation as opposed to, which is a little different than what we have been discussing here because what we're, the conversation we're on here is that the INI is causing us to have kind of an inflated inflated, well, flow, yes, through the wastewater plant, which we're saying, basically, if I'm understanding correctly, that we don't think that we should be charged for the INI because it doesn't cost them as much to treat the rainwater. Okay, well, that is not actually true because with wastewater, it's a biological process. And whenever you have increased INI going into the lines, it kills the bugs that are treating the wastewater. So it dilutes the cleansing process of the wastewater. So it actually makes it harder for them to treat the wastewater with all the INI going in. And here's my thought on that. If the INI is going into the lines because the lines are ours in the city and they're porous, and it's our fault, basically, that it's an increased INI, then and we can't afford to fix that, right? If we don't let them take over the city lines, because they can afford to fix it, right? And we can't. That's my understanding. Is that correct?
It's more convoluted than that.
Yeah, it's not quite acceptable.
Okay.
I think a large part of the problem would be the INI, one of the reasons that we're seeing increase, even though we've put millions towards the sewer repairs, as you tighten up portions of the system, it allows more to come in up down the road. So you're actually flooding more into the system as you're tightening it up. It's almost like a traffic jam. And there, the argument regarding the INI, what they're treating and what they're not treating is they're saying, well, we can't differentiate what's rainwater from what's actual waste. And we've had certain individuals tell us, actually, there are methods where you can pull off a lot of the just basic rainwater and river water that's getting in there and separate it from the waste to be treated. But that's not currently how their system is set up to treat it.
Right.
So regarding the expense on whether they can treat it and fix our INI and things of that nature, when you do that, based on their past accounting methods, I would suggest that they would not look into using existing funds they've set aside. The capital expansion, it would much rather raise rates astronomically to just basically do it.
Which was the argument before, why we were concerned about that before, right?
So I wouldn't, I would be very hesitant to look at that as an option, just because I don't think.
So you don't support that option then?
Not, not without contingencies. I'm certain.
Probably our best bet is to just plug away and try and do our INI improvement over a period of time. Do this area, do that area, if we have time.
I've actually been discussing, because I reached out to Mary Bell, one of our members of the board, and she thought sometime in March, there was supposed to get the most recent audit. But I haven't gotten it from her yet. And I was hoping to have it before tonight's meeting so I could plug it in based upon my original numbers. But they did revoke, I think, to apply the discount. So the discount's now being applied, which effectively brings that rate down to about 262,000 gallons. My original proposal, based upon about four-year-old numbers, would have brought the rate down to about two and a quarter. It was at 293 originally. I don't know, based on newest numbers, your profit's creeping up because of depreciation costs and some other capital expenses. So the 262, getting them to decrease that amount, probably would be really difficult as more and more numbers come along. So I reached out to Alan Robinson, who worked closely with Nick with his plan, and was throwing a couple of different ideas at him. Alan, he thinks that, you know, a couple of things we need to do is maybe do a complete sewer evaluation of our entire system right now, which actually may have already been done when they originally built the plant. So it may be a lot easier than to go and find that if we can get some of those original documentation. And he's even offered actually to come to a council meeting free of charge to sit down, brainstorm, discuss the plan, and see if there's any other aspects. He still likes the idea of the lagoons and thinks that that is one of the more feasible options.
Okay.
So.
So are we going to have him come to council meeting then?
He's not going to charge anything when they're building the lifters.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to learn as much as we can about this entire thing so that we can make an informed decision about what to do about it.
I mean, I think it's worthwhile getting some good questions before we even tell him what we're going to have in advance so he can come ready to discuss the current proposal, potential changes to that proposal. He was at the grad meeting with you and Leon, right?
Yeah, I was there myself.
Okay. So he already knows what the battle is facing that challenge. So, I mean, he's pretty, he's pretty involved so far with the process. He and Nick communicated pretty regularly.
So, did you approach Kevin Keefe, which one?
I attempted to, I've attempted several times to reach out to Kevin, the director out there, and I haven't had any luck on that. So I was going to go through Mary Bell to get some more updated reports, and she's hopeful at the next meeting.
And what is Nick's last name?
Nick White. Our council member that passed away.
Okay, who was it that you were saying would come here? Alan Robinson.
He's with Eclipse Engineer.
He's the ones that did our plans that we already have for a new sewer treatment plant.
I do have a couple of brainstorm things. We're not being filmed today, are we?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll wait then on some of that, until Alan is here. But that's currently, you know, it's just kind of a brainstorm session on that. And I don't know that we want to tip a hat yet.
No, I would say not.
Okay, sorry.
Anything else? Financial reports. You have your account balances on paper. I say on paper because they never are what they look like.
When are we going to get our bids for the cemetery?
They're coming in. We've already got two. They're supposed to be open next Thursday. It's mowing about, I think it's somewhere around 26 acres. And trimming around every.
The mowing's not the problem, it's the trimming is the problem.
Any questions at all about either financial statements or account balance? Entertaining motion that we accepted for the man's sake.
Make the motion.
All right, second to the, any questions, discussion? All in favor of the man, thank you, motion carries. All right. I hope we bring all the business that we have to bring forth. Well, I've got this under new business though. Anybody have any old business to bring up? Okay, on the new business, one of the things that we discussed last time is looking at water rates. What you have are five pages of water rate explaining, I'll explain them for you as the RNS said. First page, this is looking at our last fiscal year. We had expenses, you see there, 713,426.9 cents. Income of 458,709.90 cents. And then we had a loss for the year of 254,716.18, which is 21,000 plus a month. So to make it come out even, to take care of that loss, we'd have to raise our rates 55.5%. 55.5%. So you see in this next table here, the column numbers on the left is our current rates. Column on the right is what our rates would have to go to to make us break even. Okay, there's a couple of notes there. I did include the depreciation in our water accounting. I did not include that. We don't put anything into a depreciation account. Acolyne is in there, but it's compensated for in the income and expenses. And we have 35,940 dollar capital outage, which usually we don't have. It does, in the income aspect of it, it does omit any tap-ons, EPs, penalties, anything. And all the amounts that you see are per 1,000 gallons. Now, go to the next page, and you'll see a typical bill. This is a minimum pay bill, which is what a lot of people in Hartford are. Most of our people are either in the first or second level of pay. Up here you see the 18 right here, this person used 1,800 gallons, okay? See at the top where it says 1,800? 1,800 gallons, cost of 1,874, the sewer surcharge of 1140. The sewer surcharge is $5.70 per 1,000 gallons. So if you use the minimum, it's going to be 1140, which is a minimum $2,000 bill. Sewer inside is 90% of what your water cost is. Okay, so in this case, 90% of $1,874 is $16.87. Garbage is $12, school tax is 3% of the 1,874. Okay, that gives you a bill of $59.57. Down here, it was calculated. You can see how every number was calculated. Of course, that's what's up here. Now, I did the same thing with the new rates, raising the rates 55.5%. That raises the minimum bill from 1,874 to 2914. Sewer surcharge still going to be the same, still 570 per 1,000 gallons. Sewer inside is still going to be the same. Now, the way we had to do that was you had to change, but we didn't want to change the sewer charges. We didn't want to change the water bill. So the sewer surcharge or sewer inside went from being 9% of your water bill to being 58% of your water bill. And that gives you the same amount, okay? Garbage is the same. School tax went up because your 3% is now 3% of $29 or something. So it gives you a total bill of 78.20, or $72.28. That's going to be everybody's minimum bill. That's all I'm going to back. That means it went up $10.71 a month. We've got people that come in and complain when it goes over a dollar a month.
Yeah.
But you've got no depreciation?
What?
You've got no depreciation, they'll send it up?
No depreciation to the capital end at all.
Isn't that why you're in the position you're at though?
Well, we never did put anything in of depreciation because we never had the money to put in there. Right?
Turtles all the way down.
I mean, you paid for it after a while, you know? You pay, we're paying right now to redo the water plant.
I will say, that was another comment Alan made, was about the water treatment plant and not exactly being the most cost-effective method of providing water in the city.
And his idea was?
Purchase it from the county.
Yeah. It'll be a rough horse to do now that we've entered into a contract for the next odd years, 20-odd, 30-odd years to... What we're talking about is our rates will put us well above what the county's water rate is if we do the 55.5%. That's not going to be what my rate of base is, but we've got a lot of people that are on 15,000, $700 a month. And you start taking $10.71 extra, it's going to come back down.
So what contract are we in that we cannot purchase from the county?
Well, we're just refurbishing our water plant right now. Nothing's been done to it in 25 years since it was built.
So we're entered into a contract on that?
Yes.
We ought to bring it in the long.
And we need to go through it sometime, come by sometime, we'll go down to the water plant and take a look at what they're doing down there. But hopefully, costs will go down because it'd be a more efficient plant than what we've been operating. The filters right now that they're working on, one of them should come back online next week. There are three filters down there, which are great big huge tanks. And they got, one of them should be done today or tomorrow, and they'll come back online next week. But it should, we should be able to produce water cheaper than what we have been doing after the plant's refurbished.
Is there an estimate on the timeline and the decrease in expenses? Because that might change the 55.5%?
Well, they haven't given any final number, any, you know, concrete number on what it's going to save. But they just keep saying it'll be a more efficient plant and...
But since we didn't figure any depreciation, could we not, once we get the extra from the more efficiency, could that not be put aside as our?
I just don't know how much you're going to realize from it yet. You know, I don't know what it's going to be.
But that's assuming too, you all adopted 55.5% increase.
Well, I don't think you can adopt 55.5% increase if anything happens in over two or three years.
I just built a house, don't make me move.
But if, okay, so if we don't, what are we going to do? We can't continue to lose that much money.
Our discussion last, the last meeting was that we were going to start on this plan to redo all of this, starting with our employee issue and moving towards the water issue because of the, well, you guys know. So I think that instead of bouncing back and forth, we need to decide, are we sticking to that? Are we gonna, are we, you know, going back on that and developing a new plan? Or what is the deal? Because we're talking about this, but...
I'm just trying to show you this is what, what situation that we're in, you know, so that you can look and see where we are, where we are.
Well, whenever I asked about us purchasing water from the county before, what I was told was that wouldn't help us because the problem is in the lines and not with the treatment plant. And that was originally what I was told, and what I'm hearing now is, no, that's not the case. So I'm wondering.
That was quality of water, probably. Not, that hadn't, didn't have anything to do with the cost of.
No, but the quality of the water has to do with the treatment plant. Am I wrong?
So...
Most of it was those deadened lines, wasn't it?
That was a lot of it. A lot of it is the problem in our tank.
So some of it was the water treatment plant, some of it was the lines. But I didn't know anything about this contract that we were entered into that would keep us from purchasing water from the county.
But the deadened lines will be taken care of in that same project.
And we did, we did prepare that ordinance that you all passed that prohibits any new deadened lines, so hopefully you won't have any creation.
Right.
That's what we'll be doing in the second project. The water, we test water every quarter. And they test for a lot of different things. What we always have problems with are two things called PHN and HAA.
But flushing the lines, if it's the deadened lines, flushing the lines should take care of that problem, right?
The last test that we did is probably the best that we've had in a long time as far as, you know, being under the limits. I mean, the water quality that we're putting out is far exceeds what their minimum standard is. We're doing a good job of putting water out. By the time it gets though to the ends of these lines, forces in the tank up here, the quality of the water has gone.
Because of chlorine.
Not so much chlorine, there's a lot of byproducts that come from the city, the HAA, once it comes about, and the PHN comes about because of the, water gets heated and that creates a...
But we're going to stir it, we're doing that, right? And that's supposed to fix that.
So that new water comes in and mixes with the older water.
And that's a part of this contracted plan for improvements.
That's one of the projects that we have. That's the third project. That's the one at the water tank. If I go back.
I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place.
If I go back to the second one here, this is somebody who uses 7,900 gallons a month. That's pretty large user, okay? Their bill only goes up $17.66 on a $154 bill. Their bill they're paying now is 154.84. All right, they would pay 172.50. The next two are large water users. This one used 248,400 gallons. Okay, in a month's time, twice as a large user. Their bill went up from $3,300 to $3,800. $547.80. The other one is another large user. They use 325,000 gallons in a month's time. Their bill went up $737 from 44.84 to 52.23. That's if you go by the 55.5%. You can't go to 55.5% because that's going to kill everything. If you try to raise rates, it's going to be down two, three year period.
You said you weren't going to recommend 55%.
Yeah.
Did you have something you wanted to recommend that we could think about?
I would say if anything, I wouldn't go over 25%.
So we need a phased plan of increased water rates as we go through this process of citywide improvements on all of our processes. Then we need to develop a plan for a phased rate increase on our water.
Or you can just leave it like it is and keep following it from somewhere else and have your water shortage. What we're doing next. Anyway, that's what you're asked for, and that's what I'm brought to you.
You delivered.
Well.
Asking you show or see.
You take it and chew on it for a month and see what... We're not going, only water producing. Every other little town has got a water plant going through the same thing. So I don't know what to tell you. Our problem is we come out of a dirty river. If we came out of a nice lake or something like that, we wouldn't have the problem that we do.
Well, and our water treatment plan is not the process for water. Well, and our water treatment plan is not the process for water coming out of a dirty water, or a dirty river, from what I understand.
So, we have to do the best we can, we modify it, and over the years, try to make it a little more efficient.
And now, we're not able to purchase from the county because we're in a contract.
So, George, if I just set that up in a straight proportion, I'm looking at a twenty-five percent increase would be four dollars and eighty-seven cents on this lowest bill. Did I set that up right?
Well, it's probably going to be, pretty close, probably going to be a little less than half.
Because I just said, I just, well, I just set it up in a proportion.
Yeah.
Fifty-five percent over ten seventy-one as opposed to twenty-five over X. And I got four eighty-six and some change, so forty-seven.
Okay.
Is that, about, set along, okay?
Everything else is going to stay the same, just that your school tax will...
Your school tax will, just a tiny bit.
Yeah, because the only increase you've had there is in the actual cost of water and you're slightly increasing your school tax. The sewer and the garbage all stayed the same.
Then you would be accepting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year loss still.
You're on that.
If you do twenty-five, well, it's going to be close to, you're losing two hundred and fifty-four now, you'd be at least another hundred and thirty-five.
Just to clarify something from the reason, that the, the reason, one of the reasons, maybe I'm wrong, that water does lose money is that you have to transfer water out, you have to transfer money out of the water kind of amount of sewer, is that right?
No, no.
Not at all.
I do not move, sanitation is, stands on its own, and sewer up until today has stood on its own. I don't know about the spring rings and what that's going to be, you can look around your friend agenda. Nine thirty thousand five.
But standing on its own means that it's paying for the wastewater?
Everything, everything has been standing on its own as far as sanitation and sewer.
What about depreciation, are you able to put aside any for that on sewer?
But, but the general fund basically is what is having to, and the profit from sanitation is what is coming in to helping water each month.
Does this account for the profit from sanitation, or is this a straight loss?
This is revenue, not balance sheet. So, when I transfer funds in, that's...
So, that, so that it does not include any extra? This is literally straight numbers out of water, is all yours?
Well, you heard me say every month they'll move around twenty-seven thousand.
Theoretically, every fund should stand on its own without any help from anything else, and I would completely agree with that. But if you're talking about you can't automatically implement a fifty-five and a half percent increase on your people, then maybe you need to account for the fact that you've got other revenue streams that help make sure you're solvent at the same time.
Well, obviously, if you're thinking about twenty-five, thinking half of the fifty-five, then you also have to understand that you're still going to be, if everything else remained constant, which are none of your plans, but you're still going to be around a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand in, over the end of the first year. If this is twenty-five instead of fifty-five, you're right.
These are also based on last year's numbers. There are other expenses I think you've considered that are going to change.
Some expenses will go down, some will just be up.
Okay. I'll think about it for...
Oh, George, can I ask you to go over this with Tony? So, he has proper time to think about what all the differences about it between now and next month?
Sure.
But I think we're going to have to make a decision on there another next month.
There is an automatic two percent increase in water every October. We have to do that because of a contract with, that we're honoring to pay for our bonds. So, that will be calculated in as well.
Is there any, I'm back on the water thing, the one time we discussed the fact that, like, City Hall, you don't know, there's no bill that exists for City Hall, there was no bill for like maintenance, or anything like that, is that being done yet?
No.
Well, to kind of catch you all up, like, some of these old, like, the grandfathered in, since the city sells its own water, if the city was using water, like, City Hall was using water, there just wouldn't be a bill. So, whether or not you have a leak here, or if there's a maintenance garage or something, you don't really know because there's never a bill or no way of knowing. And so, that's automatically a loss to the water plant that's not properly allocated to the different departments. So, that may be one way that you can help reduce your expenses too, to chip away at that fifty-five percent.
I'm hoping that our water loss detection that we've got coming in will also... Right now, we're losing about twenty percent of the water we lose. It can jump up to the high thirties in the summertime. I'm hoping that this new system will cut back that loss, which means we won't have to produce as much down here to plan and have less expense down there. Also, too, with the new lines and everything, we won't have to flush three hundred thousand a month like we've been doing, so that's that much that we'll be saving. So, hopefully, all this stuff kind of starts to come together after a while, that if we can get a handle on our losses, then, you know, it should help in the amount of time we have to run the plant, the amount of chemicals we have to use, the labor and everything else. Anything else? All right. No actions required, we do have a discussion about, um, about our budget. One thing I've been concerned about is, since the last time our employees got any type of raise. That year.
When, when you were there, were you doing anything special? The last cross board we did was on that.
Okay. So, our employees haven't had any type of cost of living increase or anything in the last three, four years. No way they can give a raise is by going up in their qualifications or... We've had, we've lost one employee at the water plant. He left because he went Purdue. Purdue was paying twenty dollars an hour. And he has opportunity to go up in classification and certification from a class three to a class four. So...
Um, well, with, that is part of the entire purpose of updating the policies and procedures and the entire personnel structure of the city. And I did connect with Ms. Schindelbauer and got a quote for their services for us for the current amount of employees that we have, which I thought I printed out for us here today, but apparently, I printed out the wrong email from her, because this doesn't have the numbers on it that I needed. So, that's why I was sitting here looking at this while you were talking, because I was like, it's there somewhere, but it's not. So, I think that, I mean, I can tell you the services that they are trying to offer us, which is, she says, "We do have current versions of the employee handbook, that is two hundred and fifty dollars for non-KLC insurance customers. If you are interested, let me know, and I can send it to you and invoice the city. In addition, we offer a service that will update the city's personnel policies. The process begins with KLC reviewing the current policy and making comments and suggestions, suggestions for changes. We can then meet to discuss my suggestions and any that the council are interested in doing in addition to those. This can be done at no charge to the city, so it would probably take a month, about a month before the review would be complete. If you decide to have KLC complete the update, I will give you a couple of proposals that would include the update, meetings, trainings, and updates for the policy for four years after completion, if you would like me to review and mail me." So, what she's saying is, they'll do the meeting at no cost to the city, but there is a charge for the, for KLC services and that, and I think it was like, and I'm guessing here, I think it was around twelve hundred dollars for her to do, for them to do this for us. I apologize for not having that number with us, because I meant to enter a proposal for that tonight, but I guess we will have to wait and, or either hold a special meeting for that or wait until our next meeting to actually decide whether or not we want to do that. I think that it's the smartest move. I think if we want to do this and act quickly on it, for a couple thousand dollars for all their services in four years, you know, in the future of re, you know, taking another look at it, I think it's a, a good move and a smart move, especially considering where we are.
Is that over a four-year term here, we just pay the one fee for four years?
Yes. One fee, and they provide all those services, they meet with us, we give them our suggestions. They can consider things like our, our money situation, our employee situation, together in deciding how to revamp the employees' compensation plans and benefits and things like that, that we're, none of us have, you know, done enough to say that we're experts at it. So, I think it's the smartest move considering where we are. Unfortunately, I can't even enter a motion for that right now.
Can you, can you make your email on the phone?
And, not, my work's in the...
Any questions?
Does anybody have any thoughts on that? Anybody disagree that that's a good idea?
That's a lot cheaper than asking me to look into it, Gus.
I thought that you talked, for some reason, I had fifteen thirty minutes.
It might be.
For one hundred dollars, yeah.
You know, it's a couple thousand dollars, one more or the other.
Okay.
I don't know. Can't remember for sure, but whatever it was, whenever I looked at it, I thought, yep, we need to do that. So, it must not have been astronomical. So, but I will get that to you guys, and we'll, I guess, we'll decide what to do then.
Could we do this? Even if it was four hundred for the four years, that's just sixteen hundred dollars. Could we make a motion that we use the service if it is not more than sixteen hundred dollars?
Yes, you can make that motion.
And then if it is more than sixteen hundred...
If it is more than that, we have to come back to that.
Right.
Okay, well, then I make a motion for us to use the services of KLC to, to review and update our employee policy, personnel policies, if it does not exceed the cost of sixteen hundred dollars. How sick.
Okay, motion, fine, sake, discussion regarding the motion, we've already discussed it a little bit, anybody have a more discussion regarding that? Karen, I would vote if you're in favor of this, up at the hand, thank you, Mark and Karen. Anybody else have any other new bids to bring up, any ideas for us to consider tonight?
You all have these work process schedules for water treatment and the water treatment plant operator, and I think, they both say that, but I think one of them is wastewater, or did you just print them? No, it's not wastewater. It's all one, isn't it?
No, the rest were the two pounds.
Okay. You can use your name.
Drive two, let's see.
Yeah. Um, this is the, the work process schedule for apprenticeships, for Kentucky Apprenticeship Program for Water Treatment. They also have an apprenticable wastewater treatment, obviously, which looks almost the same, if not the same, and part of this may be that.
This is Kentucky?
Yes.
State of Maine?
They probably copied it.
Okay. Have a little second, we got the right one here.
They probably copied it, no, we got it straight from the Kentucky Labor Cabinet, so, they probably copied it, which is...
That's difficult.
Hey, you know what, why reinvent the wheel? But anyways, the, the coordinator for Kentucky Apprenticeships, for the registered apprenticeships, was going to be here tonight to discuss that possibility with us moving forward. I think that we should probably, I, I mean, I, he was welcome to come as far as I was concerned, but I think we should probably start with the, the employee policies and take a look at this as an option moving forward, if it's even conceivable for us, but...
Explain the apprenticeship program, I know what you're talking about, because others might not understand, but...
Okay, does anybody not understand what an apprenticeship is?
No, but we know what apprenticeship is, but related to this.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, basically, what, what our idea was, and actually, Edwina's idea, was that because we have an income issue as far as the city goes, our budgetary issue, I should say, and we need skilled labor in those areas, it might be a good idea for us to look at the option of staffing using the apprenticeship program as a feeder into those positions.
Kentucky started a program where they're encouraging people to, and they're trying to involve businesses so that students won't go to college and end up with a huge college expense bill. What they'll do is go directly to work at a company and will spend time there as an apprentice, earning money, but learning the trade. So, after a few years, whatever it takes to become qualified, certified in their field, then they will be able to work for that company, the company basically trains them to do what they want to do.
It's on the job training, basically, but it's also classroom structured, so they're getting their education and they are learning on the job at the same time. And the employer partners with the apprenticeship program because that helps with some of the expense. So, once you call it an apprenticeship, there's requirements, these are the requirements that you have to meet. And this is just one example. Every employer, which would be us in this situation, gets to tailor the program to their own needs. So, we could say, you know, we want our water treatment plant operator to have these skills, we want them to have this experience, and this is the progressive wage that we're going to pay them as they move through this program. But Kentucky is pushing apprenticeship programs not just because they, they want to reduce the student debt, but because they want to increase the Kentucky skilled labor force. So, it's a big push right now for that, and Steve Tressler, who is with the Labor Cabinet, is interested in working with us on that, and he was going to be here tonight, couldn't come. He just wanted to talk to us and tell us basically what, what is possible. Not that, you know, this is just brainstorming, but he couldn't be here, but he is willing to come and talk to us about it in the future.
What got me thinking about it was Pikeville, just, City of Pikeville just did this to get some employees that they need. And the state pays a portion, so it's like they would pay a portion of the salary of whoever we have in the program.
There, there's definitely monetary incentive to take on an apprenticeship program. But I do welcome you guys and invite you all tomorrow. I know everybody's got their own thing going on, I didn't know until today that he was actually going to be at the Job Corps Center tomorrow, speaking with our Davis County School Board administrators, but talking about the apprenticeship program, so if you're interested in learning more about apprenticeships as a whole, you're welcome to come at eleven AM tomorrow, and we'll feed you lunch, and you can sit through that meeting and listen and check it out.
You guys have got to see Job Corps, you see Job Corps, find out what we're all about. Fresh food.
Come on, let her come. But, yeah, it's, I think it's a, it's an option that we should look at, and that's all.
Explain your interest as Job Corps personnel in this program, you know, because initially, this not involved Job Corps, did it?
No, no, the apprenticeship programs, and as of today, and I was in Frankfurt today with the Labor Cabinet, meeting about this very thing, which is why I spoke to... which is why I spoke to them about this while I was there today. But I was there for Job Corps. And what we're doing right now currently with Muhlenberg Job Corps is the Kentucky Labor Cabinet is going to make the Muhlenberg Job Corps Center an apprenticeship sponsor. So our students, as they go through the Job Corps program, they're already doing, the work that they're already doing, it will count towards the apprenticeship and they're gonna be a pipeline feeder for the apprenticeship programs that employers sponsor. So our welders can be perfect feeders right into the apprenticeship programs and already have the backend. They're already front-loaded the hours of the classroom hours of the apprenticeship program so that the employer isn't having to pay for that classroom education portion. They're already getting those hours on the backend for free. But we'll have to tailor our training to each of those employers who are... Who have the apprenticeship programs. The cool thing about that is for us... The awesome thing about that is for us, one, it's gonna be huge for us in recruiting because, you know, we've had problems recruiting quality students. I mean, everybody wants to send us troubled students. But if we have apprenticeship and the Secretary of Labor saying, you know, this is quality education and this is your future if you come to Job Corps, Muhlenberg Job Corps in particular, then that'll help us hopefully with... Make those partnerships with the high schools a little bit better because, you know, no matter how many times I say it, they're still sending us the dropouts and the, oh, this kid can't make it in high school, so here, you know? And that's fine, but that's not the kind of student that's going to... And I'm speaking in general terms. That's not the kind of student that's gonna be largely successful leaving the program. And so what we need is committed adults who can handle the commitment of the learning process and the employment process afterwards. So it's gonna be huge for us. And not only are they doing this for Muhlenberg, but we've started that ball rolling, which is really exciting. But they've already met with the National Director of Job Corps because they want to make this a nationwide thing. We're just gonna be the first and pilot. And all it took, literally all it took was we had a meeting that we were invited to with the Workforce Board. We went and whenever they were finished talking, you know, I was like, did you know that your Commonwealth has seven Job Corps Centers? The most in the United States, right under your nose? And everything you're talking about is what we're already doing? Secretary of Labor did not know that.
Do you only work with high school students?
No.
Now, we...
We... 70% of college students are... End up dropping out of school. So 70% of students who go into college drop out. So that is a huge recruitment area for us. But the type of students that we are recruiting are not those 70%. It's not the ones who went to some community college and, you know, did a semester here but got burnout or whatever and then decided they want to do some... That's not the type of students we're getting. We're getting the students who, you know, have 10 felony charges and got them expunged so that they could come to Job Corps, which is fine. I mean, you know, there's... We all know that there's a large incarceration, right? And those are... That's a good pool for skilled labor at some point. But that's not, you know, gonna help our perception around the world, you know, for people to know what Job Corps, what we offer.
Tomorrow, you're gonna see a lot of Family Resource Center Directors at the meeting also because we've never recruited through elementary schools. We've always focused on high schools. Well, I got thinking about it. You have somebody who had a child early. That kid is now probably in preschool, kindergarten, first grade, and their parents still fall under our age limit. So the Family Resource Center Directors are the first ones who hear people come in and say, I don't, you know, I don't have a job, I'm a single little parent, I can't take care... You know?
And what Job Corps offers for those people is we have help. We can help them with cost of daycare. We can help them with child support costs.
I was thinking Ethan's, but I think you just...
Transportation.
I think he just turned 25 in January.
For the City of Hartford. Now, you don't have any program per se for water plant operator, but there might be somebody who comes out of a program that would go into the water plant. But we could use an equipment operator right now, say, in our distribution or...
Exactly.
Department, you know, that would...
And then apprentice them into the water treatment plant.
Use them up here half time, use them down maintenance half time, some up there.
You're exactly right. And our students might be a good pool for that. But aside from our students, just the apprenticeship program...
Being involved in it.
As a whole, is something that I think all employers should be looking at. Because they don't care if you take one student every five years. They will help you through that entire process if you are willing to create an apprenticeship. They're willing to come and listen. And, I mean, he tried to get a... I just met with him today, mentioned this today, and he's like, y'all are having a city council meeting tonight? Let me see if I can get travel waiver and come down there and I'll stay the night at Rough River. Come to the council meeting and come to Job Corps with you tomorrow. I mean, they are... They're fine with going wherever, talking to anybody at any time. He just found out about the meeting at Job Corps tomorrow, today, because, I mean, it was short notice. And he's like, yeah, I'm gonna rearrange my schedule. Hang on just a second, I'm coming to that tomorrow. So they're willing... If you're willing to talk about apprenticeships, they're willing to come and talk to you. So I think it's something that we should look at. And I will let him, if you guys want to, I'll let him know when our next council meeting is and he will have that invite and come and speak to us about that possibility. And like I said, I think we need to focus on updating the policies and procedures, but it can't hurt to learn about it, you know, beforehand.
And this is a variety of skill sets that you do then?
There's over 1,000 apprenticeable jobs. So probably everything and anything that we can think of is apprenticeable.
And so you don't have to pull...
They come out with no expense. You know, like going to college, you got that college loans to pay off. You don't have that in the apprenticeship program.
They actually come out with some money to...
Well, they come out ahead.
Certification in order to get...
They come out ahead and we come out ahead is the plan because we get some of the funding from the state for the apprenticeship program. And the student doesn't have to have the debt that they would if they were on their own and not getting the on-the-job training, so, yeah.
So let's take a look at anything else that anybody wants to bring up under... Anything else anybody has? Let me give you some updates on things. Like I said, we've lost one operator down at the plant. I probably didn't say it was a friend there, but... To get a $5, $6 an hour raise and have a possibility of going up even more is hard to pass up. He is gonna try to help us out part-time, so, you know, if we need somebody to cover him. Cemetery. We talked last time about trying to contract somebody going to cemetery. We've got two bids, but the deadline's not on next Thursday, so I expect some more to come in. We've had some interest in it. At the water plant, the three filters, one of them has been completely rejuvenated and they're putting all of the filtering element in it right now. It should go back online sometime next week. And then once they get a check on the quality, come out, then they'll be able to use it and take another one down. We've got a problem with one of the others is deteriorating worse than they had initially thought. It's probably gonna cost us another $49, $50,000. We've had some contingency funds worked into the contract of $105,000, so... We're still all right so far. We may have to ask for a little loan extension or get a little more money to pay for the third one, but it's not gonna be that much. The fire truck that we discussed at the last meeting has been ordered. It's a basic truck. But it's a ton truck that is gonna come in a little less than what they estimated on our sheet that we had last time. But we're gonna end up with a surplus truck from out there at the north department. And so I don't know if it's gonna be worth anything at all the way they talked about it. It was used when we bought it and now it'll be used. But that's supposed to go to the fire department meeting next Tuesday at 10:00, so... The funding's supposed to be taken care of, you know? It's not gonna cost us hardly anything for them to get that truck. They're only gonna get it out of their state money, it's gonna be kind of mangled around. Jimmy Smith is getting married Saturday. And I pulled it out for just information. If you're interested in going, it's at the New Assembly, 4:00 Saturday afternoon. And the reception's at 6:30 at New Assembly, I think. And he's only off for a week, so...
Did you say 4:30?
4:00.
Gonna take him a week to recover?
He's already been off today this week, so...
He's married, he's starting to recover.
Oh, yeah, okay. That explains it right there.
Anyway, I'm sort of averaging information. I'm sure he would appreciate anybody who showed up at his wedding, so... Anybody else have any other information? No, I didn't have most of your journey.
Did we decide on a time for our meetings?
We haven't. Just like you for bringing that up. We had... We were waiting to go decide for you to be here, talk about time, but now Tony's not here, so...
Tony wants it as late as we can do it.
Yeah. No, if Tony's talked to me, he'd like to.
I have clockwork for him. He likes to...
Five o'clock.
Five, 5:30 some night.
What time can you be here?
5:00 with me.
All right, then I'll go with 5:00.
Four just kind of pushes it.
Did you need...
Yeah.
5:00.
I can... I mean, it would be...
Better for 5:30.
It would be easier for me, just little of me, 5:30. But I can be here at 5:00. I mean, it hasn't been a problem so far unless, you know... Today I was in Frankfurt, I still made it back here by 3:30. I think that my boss has not said a word about it, so I think that I'm okay. If you guys want to stick with 5:00 or if it's a problem, do 5:30. If it's not, I'd love to do 5:30. So I'll leave the rest...
I'll make a motion that we change our meeting time from 4:30 to 5:00. Fourth Thursday of the month.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right.
So we're just doing Thursdays now? I mean, not just one on Thursday?
Once a month.
Fourth Thursday, 5:00.
George is so efficient and he's got everything running so smooth.
The fourth Thursday.
He doesn't need but once a month to straighten us out.
Yeah, but that... Those days in between is killing.
You gonna limit our phone calls? So that can be the next thing?
All righty, yeah.
Make a motion, let the meeting adjourn.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Discussion.
Thank you. All right. Got you out here for the hour.
Thank you.